Seven o'clock PM, the Oak Ridge City Council. Thank you all for being here. Can you all rise and plug your little? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to our republic, our which is fair, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for being here. I appreciate it. I would tell you that we're pretty excited to be in here. We don't have the mic on today because of a popping. So those of you who live in the back, please give me a high sign or give us a high sign if we're not speaking loud enough. Okay, I would appreciate that. Jackie, can you call the votes please? Mayor Holston? Here. Councilor Hadley?
Here.
Councilor Whitney?
Here.
Councilor Porco? Uh, Councilor Porco is extremely busy. He's only able to come together at work. Councilor Maxfield?
Here.
Councilor Kimian?
Here.
Councilor Hollis?
Here.
Thank you Jackie. And we still have four. Uh, additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. On the agenda, I have an addition. Under the consent agenda, you all also received the minutes for September 19th, which was left off for approval. So that will be added later also. And that's all that I have. Council, do you have any additions, corrections, or adjustments? Okay, thank you. And we will move to the public comments. But as you know, we have public comment in the beginning and we have public comment at the end. And because we have a resolution about our water rates, um, we will be having public comments before we start that. So if you choose a following, you choose that you would rather wait for the water rate. And I think some of them are moderate. I'll start with those. Um, Dennis? How does it?
Oh wait.
You want to wait? Okay, and Trudy Hammond?
I just have a question on what happened. If there's no increase, then you want to...
You want to hold that question in? Or hopefully it's going to leave without discussion. Sure, I'll get to that. And, uh, also Floyd Staley. He said you want to talk about safety.
Yes, uh, folks, uh, Floyd Staley. Please forgive me if I get a little emotional. It's finally happened. My wife, Bethany. She's been concerned about her safety. Because the thief came up to my place two hours ago. And stole some power stuff. So she doesn't feel safe.
No, she's very careful.
So I've been discreetly trying to improve the public safety. And things about if thieves are arrested and go to town, then the district attorney sending them right back up here. This is after 54 years of marriage. And I brought my wife to Oak Ridge. We raised our family here. So... I might take an act of God or just killing him and help out with Mr. Cutch. To bring the district attorney up here that's down the hall. And the church. And everything discussed. But it's down the hall meeting. I don't know how many of those people feel unsafe. I hope you feel kind of good. Mind that. I think it's important to exist. I don't know what else to say. This is the longest time I've ever had. I better just sit down. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. I'm tired from your loss. Sheriff Houston?
Houston.
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 Okay, again, on the safety issue. School Street is a personal drag strip. I call dispatch. These cars go by so fast, I cannot get a license plate. Same vehicles. If you look right across the corner here, you're going to see where somebody's peeled out. I haven't even got to this point yet. And now they're all peeling out in front of our house and in front of the whack here. Okay, we live right there. We have issues. Again, last month, three dead cats. When is it going to be kicked? Do you think we'll get some attention for just two speed bumps on all of School Street? Just two. Just two. Break up School Street. If they want to race, put them on 58. At least they should go very high there instead of going 65 down School Street. Please. Is it going to take a dozen to kick for it to be considered? This is what I need to know. Are you asking me to answer you? Yes, please. I do not have any answers like that. Thank you, that'll be enough. You have said. Excuse me. Thank you for being here. Happy to hear that you're allowing me to speak too. I know that there are issues with this. I've said that through this department. And I think we should all be calling them in. And I know we do call them in that book. And they give you the fifth degree when you call this in? Well, I think they ask questions. But I'm not party to that. I can't, I can't speak to that. What I can speak to is that you and I both share the same concern about the speeding that is going on. Whether it be on Highway 58, whether it be on First Street, or whether it be on School Street. We have residents in our community who are not respectful of our speed limits. And we are trying to address that. I know. I agree with you. Um, and this isn't something that, you know, by, by, by resolution can be corrected. We can't say, everybody, you have to stop speeding. It doesn't work that way. This is a culture in our community that we want to get to. What we can do is to address it through our public safety. And I assure you that we are doing that. These things don't happen quickly. I can go out and pour bag of vitamins and make your speed bump. Um, but it's something that we are definitely fully appreciative of. And I encourage you to bring it to the council as often as you feel comfortable. Thank you. You're welcome. And I have your thoughts.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Porco. My name's Gary Carl. I live on First Street in Oak Ridge. And I want to talk to the council to support the disc golf. Of course, that's being planned for Osprey Park. The reason that I'm supportive and we're asking you to be supportive of this golf is it will help tourism, which will help business. And I have the business, so perhaps it's self-serving. But there are other businesses here too in Oak Ridge. And I think they will all benefit from having a disc golf course. Now, the one in Osprey Park is, I believe, a prelude. Is that the right word?
I don't think so.
To, to the real disc golf course, which is, has been proposed for the industrial park. So it doesn't cost very much. Put it in. It costs even less to maintain it. And it's an attract, attraction for people who come here to recreate. So maybe they're here to mountain bike, maybe they're here to hike. They'll also be encouraged to play disc golf. I hope you're considered to, to your time.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, that's all the public comments we've had signed up for. If there's any, is there anybody who did not sign up that wishes to make public comment moves? Okay, thank you. Um, mayor's comments, announcements, and confirmations? Um, I have a few reminders. Reminder once again of the clothing swap on October 13th. Then the benefits of the library. You'll find flyers around town for that. A reminder of the Great Atlantic cleanup event this Saturday. Nine o'clock, Green Waters Park, an after-party is being hosted by the pub. And I appreciate them preaching not to do that. For all of those who have signed up. I will be at Green Waters at 8:30 in the morning. Help find people up and move there most of the day. It goes until noon. At noon, there's a party coming along here. Some needs picked up. We've thrown out these gloves, bags. The musters are being provided in our facilities to be able to put what we find in there. That's it, including the musters that we usually find. So I encourage you all to come out at that time. As far as what's going on in this next month, I'm just going to run through. We have a land act meeting. The admin committee is meeting on the 10th. The budget committee. We have a pre-meeting also on the 10th. LPOG is meeting on the 10th. And LAC is meeting on the 10th. So public meetings will not be attended. But the important ones during the committee will be. October 17th, it's the Land Home League Council Committee. I had intended on attending this one, October 17th. However, I adjourned. So I will not be attending it. If any council would like to, it's from 1-3 at LPOG. I'd really appreciate you reaching out. I'd like to have a representative of Oak Ridge there, if that's at all possible. O-D-A meeting on the 21st. There is a filling our audit against October 21st, June 22nd. Anything else I have on that? There's a whole lot of stuff going on. Also, just, uh, we all attended the LSC conference. It was attended by over a thousand, something like that? Thousand people? Over and down. Scheduled with school. It was interesting. It had a formative sessions ranging from understanding property laws to working with agencies to set the communities from disaster to the nuts and bolts of hers, training in HR, advice on how to make councils successful. I think we all got a lot out of it. And I would really thank all the council that did attend. That we took it personally and respected your time for the year. And we shared an aft conference. I'm sure others will want to come in and, uh, start a council panel. I had a lot I noticed there. Oh, councilors, please remember to revise to the reporter anything that you read out or provide to the council at council meetings. I should ask to remind you of that. Also, Nelson, can you send me her thoughts about housing? If you haven't done so, I would really appreciate that you do that. I'm hoping to be able to share those with councilor, with Commissioner Woodson. So, um, it's a reminder. And... That, well, I'm meeting with, I think it's around the 14th. So wait. Yep. On 14th. Um, if you have to have some time to sort that. And then, uh, all those that I have received, I'm sure that they just talked about that thought on housing. And we'll talk about it later on too. But I did want to let her know that we have been thinking about it. And we have, we do have some issues that we would like to part with. Nothing hard and fast, just anything that we're ready to see results with in the next month. But they have beginning to formulate their ideas of what they think the housing situation is like. That's why we have Royal Community to, and what are things like that. I've had, I have some bad, next page. Hold on. So mayor? The gentleman? Hold on. Councilors? Go ahead, Catherine.
Um, I was just going to let you know that I was just having a think to that at the time.
Oh, wonderful. I would send you this stuff up in there. And that we can know where and when and whatever stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Do you have anything to say on this first?
It's in, uh, Eugene.
Um, I don't know if it's more appropriate to say that word later in the meeting, but I'm going to attend a Parks and Community Services meeting. But it, and it does relate to the disc golf discussion later a little bit.
Okay, well, I think when we get to number 11, then I'll ask you into the board.
Exactly, I think that would be perfect.
Perfect. I'll make sure I write it down. I'm going to type it in. Make sure that she pointed it out. And, oh, Catherine.
I'd like to thank the citizens and the council and the city for sending me over there. To believe, to help me along.
Senator?
Um, I probably should have thought we said earlier on that. But are we going to be conducting the council's research today? Or second number?
October 17th. October 17th, if that will be on the agenda.
It will be session, it's part of the meeting.
Okay. Let's relax in the consent agenda.
I have a quick scheduling question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Quick, quick, the work session between the commission and the council will take place for the TSP.
With the budget?
No, no, the TSP. Which I can use, or a work session between the two.
Oh.
October 7th? Okay, got you.
October 7th. Another thing we're talking about is that. Yeah. Okay. Consent agenda, council.
Um, we, through, if you can go with the...
Um, we call the votes, Jackie. Mayor Holston?
I...
Councilor Whitney?
Hi.
Councilor Kimian?
Hi.
Councilor Hadley?
Hi.
Councilor Hollis?
Hi.
Councilor Maxfield?
Hi.
Passes, I think, councilors. To the last few business members in council. That is point one, at least a correction of our town hall. As that can be really remembered. We agreed that we wanted to consider options about having a town hall specifically to address some of the criminal activity that was happening. And our feelings in our community are goal of the council that we weren't getting the response from the D.A.'s office. And to also just learn more about what is going on in our community and the process that, that goes through when we, when we're arrested. So there were several community members that have pointed out they felt that there was an increase. So we voted to ask a small committee and put one together to look into what that would look like and set a date. So Brian, would you have to read this, um, agenda? Sorry, I surprised you, didn't I?
You did. Uh, okay, agenda bill discussion and date approval for State of Oak Ridge Town Hall. Proposed actions, discussion, and a motion from the board to approve the date of the town hall. It's 1.1 and enclosed as an exhibit as the direct planning guide brought forward by the committee. It was the ad hoc committee that was appointed. Uh, and I'm the author here. Issue, council formed a formal committee to investigate a little bit of town hall for the citizens of Oak Ridge. This is brought to council for discussion and approval of the proposed date on the evening of November 20th, 2019. Uh, right now, the estimated physical impact is $400. Uh, your options are to approve the proposed date or do not approve the proposed date. Our recommendation is to schedule the town hall meetings for November 20th, 2019.
Any other questions?
Would you like to schedule a town hall meeting for November 20th?
Okay.
Okay.
Push a second in. All right, we're going to try to schedule. Town Hall? Location?
Maybe we discuss the whack gene.
Right.
Yes.
Part of the location. Councilor Maxfield?
The $400 physical impact, would that machine be going towards without being?
Uh, there would be probably some paper supplies that we launched the tables to hand out to things. It would possibly be rental chairs if we didn't have enough to cover that. Just in this way, yes.
How much fund would that come out of?
It would be a general fund.
Any other questions?
So I noticed in the form of the documentation that was provided, that there's some different people that you guys will be talking to, to bring to this. Has anybody done any reaching out?
Uh, Chief, who were you speaking with?
Uh, we have the, one of the federal judges confirmed. And then, uh, the 20th. And then we're trying to get a circuit judge and then art judge and then our state prosecutor.
I spoke up to the prosecutor and he needed to be confirmed. He said, "I have that date."
We actually had a small committee meeting with Mr. Cutch and John and Michael to discuss how to town. And we discussed options for inviting different people and whether we bring some people for us and different avenues of looking at it.
I'm curious. Chief Martin, uh, do you feel like this will be beneficial for our community?
Well, the, the one thing will be each judge to kind of explain their section of the criminal justice system. The circuit court judge, the circuit court judge, and the federal judge. That's the course we interact with. And then Pat Maloney, who works for the city attorney's office as prosecutor, he can basically go through our municipal court and what his ideas are. Cause he's the one that sees most of our stuff.
Shall I second? I, I have some questions about this as far as, um, have we narrowed down what it is exactly that we are expecting to get from it? As far as the results? And have we narrowed down up to some parameters about, about not just this going to cover the community? Cause they don't know what to expect. In my thoughts, I, I don't want this, I don't want to invite people in to answer questions and have the community and council be, being, you know, bitch that, that's not what this is for. To help us understand how to move through the process. So I just, I, I hope that we have the parameters in it and that we can establish that and communicate that well to the community. And I wonder if we talked about what the, what the scope would be and what that message was.
Can I answer that? So the document that was provided, I don't have one in me, but, um, that is a sample town hall meeting. Format, yeah. Um, which would, as we walk through that together, a committee, we will be developing what, what the intention is, what, um, we want to have speakers cover and how much time to allow for Q and A and...
Okay.
And that kind of stuff. We also plan on having literature like Brian mentioned for petty kids, you know, the alcohol. And Michael is just having some information about, like, specifics for Oak Ridge available for people. And then, um, the red and blue that's in there, that's, that's a working document. So the black is the suggested format. The red and blues are where Brian and I and Chrissy have all, and Michael have had discussion and both of the ideas that we've been socking into those sections, what we, what we want to do. So if you, um, or anyone wants to make any recommendations for that, I'm sure that it's a Google Doc, so anyone can help with that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You guys are working on it. I just wasn't sure how far we've gotten in the process and, and so. So you will be then formulating those, those far leaders. And if you're not feeling well, like, if you're in the far community, if you're doing that.
So for clarity, it's more informational, uh, town hall meeting. And I'm assuming you have a polite taking of maybe, um, great suggestions? Or is it just the informational format? Is it more of a community?
Well, it's informational. We have free land information. We really want to get out to the community. Olivia, the idea, correct, by Don, was Don wanted to really show the community what happens with the petty crime. What all the, kind of, like, the bureaucratic mess that you have to go through for petty crime and why we see so much of it. We see the same, we're petty offenders. The stuff that we're, it's constant, not, not big stuff, the more petty stuff. So it's a way for our police to really get that information out and then also have some outside places like the federal judge, the, um, circuit court judge, and also our own prosecutor to be able to kind of, kind of back them up, but also point out maybe, um, where our pitfalls are, maybe? But, um, yeah. And then, um, like you're saying, hopefully have some real statistical data that's present for, for Oak Ridge. But also have, for those of people that wait to be elected officials, saying we've had comment, little question and answer cards when people come in. So people can come in and write their question down and then we can kind of have a chance to look at it and make sure it's appropriate. And then give our speakers a chance to answer the question. Hopefully have a little bit of public dialogue. But obviously there's, we will have to be careful there.
And I'm also curious, do you feel that's enough time to get everything scheduled and to also, um, do the outreach for that meeting?
Outreach for?
For the town hall. I mean, I know it's a month and a half out.
Yeah, I think, I think the average person makes that much time. But I think the hardest part was getting all the key players to pick a date and that's, that's what we're looking on. And that is already, I think that's the, making sure that people can be on one thing. Also, um, one thing that I'm hoping to get out of this too is more feedback from our community about how they feel about their safety in our town. Whether or not we can answer any of that is not probably possible because we only have a couple of hours. But we could gather the information and then figure out what can we do with this information. Maybe a lot of people feel the same way about it. Maybe that should be a best. And I understand it might not be, you know, as big of a deal for people. So maybe it wouldn't be a best. But I'd like to get a feel for how our community thinks about this thing.
So if I, heard correctly, it sounds like we're going to have some of the prisoners share information about their case of this big problem. And I'm sure they'll also share, they're going to share the gaps in the business that they see from the input or changes or with the pitfall. Um, I think it would be nice to, if I were a citizen, I would want to hear what's being done to address someone that if they already know there's some pitfalls and we have people presenting that information, I would want to know what's being done already and what's being looked at. And then what I can do myself, um, within my own little piece of my community to make things safer for myself and others. Um, I think they'll have some things to share with this. And then, um, also to, um, find ways to help some of this back on the community of how can you help us help you? I think that's important. So I really like to think.
Can we talk about how to give a watch or a report? Give some of that information?
I think about the safety committee that we're pushing here. Get the information from the citizens, the how we're going to do this thing. I think that's very important because we're just going through doing that now. There's a point. I think that's why it's so important and everybody's talking about. Cause at least you'll have a committee set up so we can listen to what the problems are.
And that committee is not full yet, right?
No.
So maybe if it's still not full by then, it would be a good project. You're really interested.
It's a great idea.
Absolutely. Absolutely, you have a side to it. We should have. Yeah. And the other, before we talk further.
Um, just one thing I would think, I think that we're going to garner from it, and I hope we do, is that we're not alone. Um, just in my, in our little bit of researching and doing this, I'm already learning that the things, the issues we have here are not unique to Oak Ridge. Small communities, there are things that is that same thing. Um, the exact thing, crime issues would be came plenty Terry and all sorts of problems. But we'll learn a little bit about that too, while we're... The same though, if a lot of others can help here.
Yes, we are. I think we all heard that, that, uh, complex. Yes, we did. Sure. The same issues that we, um, which was good thing, and that thing. But it was comforting to know that, um, that we're... that, that there are more heads than it does, kind of, solve some of the problems that, that we have here.
It's a good thing, because in that meeting, though, that you learn what to do, because you realize all the people over there, that's why I really appreciate going.
Yeah, I agree with you. Call for votes?
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Holston. Uh, Counselor Hollis.
Aye.
Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney.
Aye.
Counselor Maxwell.
Aye.
That passes. How about that? Thank you, Senator. Okay, this is the administrative, uh, ten point one, having an elaborate course for a little event after action report.
Preliminary, all right. First, I'd like to, importantly, introduce my better, best guest, who's here, House Honey, Sissy, and she's in the middle right there. Glad to have her here for a short time, and back to her. And the second, Chief, is Paul Funnight, this, on the thirty first, let me know.
What was that, what was that?
Paul Funnight.
Oh, Paul Funnight.
Carnival for the kids, we have in the last, where we do.
Believe it's volunteer.
I believe Sergeant McPherson, or Sergeant Martinson, you can contact any one of them, we do need volunteers.
And that's on the thirty first?
Yeah, it's on Halloween.
It's on Halloween? And where did they do it, here at the WAC?
Yes. We, we, we're, we're, most likely, because we, this, we were trying to maybe do it somewhere else with the school, because we got a little packed last year, and it got kind of hot and sweaty, and it's, yeah, so, so, but for, for right now, we're pretty much gonna do it here.
Okay, same time you got it.
Six days.
Six days.
And now, just hand it over to Cheryl Musk Pope, because she's been very flexible, and I'm very happy to have her here, presenting the after action reports.
Okay, great. I know you all know me, I think I know most people in the audience, so as I'm getting the text up, set up here, I'll just give you a quick recap, most everyone knows and lived through the storm we had last. Last February, we had the snowstorm that, that left us without power and isolated from both the east and west for several days, and the snow was on us for a week. So many people in this room all participated on the response team that was set up, I started helping probably about day three as a volunteer coordinator, because I saw there was a lot of different volunteer activities going on, and, and just to give them a point of contact where they can coordinate with each other in a volunteer capacity. And just a little bit of background, I had a career as a, as a wildland firefighter, trained in ICS, and then spent the last three years of my career working for US, USA Office of International Disaster Response, training people on how to, to respond to disasters, and then conducting after action reports. So I had a bit of a skill set to help the city through this, and city council said, yes, let's go ahead and have an after action report, or after action process. So I'm gonna briefly do a few slides about the after action process, and then, then a short bit about what the final conclusions are in the report, city council has copies of the report, and city has it, and it's digital, so they'll be able to share it. I will say that this was internal after action review report, so that was people that were in Oak Ridge responding, talking to each other about how we felt the response went. We never did have an interagency response, ideally, that's something we would have liked to have done, but we do know that the county had a survey, so they probably have some conclusions that would be very similar to the things that we experienced, as they were responding across the entire county, with, with all the different agencies, and there are many, so. So we won't get too much into that stuff, it's gonna be really an internal focused report. So an after action review is a professional discussion of response, it's focused on performance, procedures, and process, it's a review of what happened and why, and the purpose is to identify ways to sustain strengths and improve weaknesses of our ability to respond. So outcomes of having after action reviews are improved decision making, better communication understanding, and improved procedures and practices, that's really the biggest one, is identifying procedures and practices, and institutionalizing those for future responses. So the process that ideally is an after action survey, followed by a workshop, that is then accumulated in a report, and then tasking out assignments from that report, some follow-up. So I'll do a quick, we did do a survey, so a quick snapshot of survey results, the whole survey is in the report, and then there's summary, a summary section of all the comments that people gave, and the issues that were highlighted. So first with the survey, we wanted to survey the people that helped respond, but then we also shared it on Facebook to get somewhat of the public input, it wasn't exhaustive surveys, just enough to kind of highlight key themes, so those could be talked about at the workshop. So the main purpose of the survey was to identify how people received assistance during the storm, one hundred and thirty seven people responded, and again, I have that asterisk because it just was online, so that's kind of a select group of the population, so people that have access to internet and are on Facebook, so we know it wasn't necessarily a crosscutting survey, and then the results helped frame the workshop. So the results that we, we didn't ask a lot of questions, just a few, so first we, one of the key things that we wanted to know about was how people received information, because we were without power, we were without radio, we were without a lot of things, so we wanted to know how people were communicating. And what we found is fifty-two percent of people, granted, some of this was on Facebook, some of this through email, was Facebook, we know that was a huge component of people communicating, though. AT&amp;T was down, but Verizon, Verizon Cellular did have internet, so that was one of the key ways we shared information, and the other thirty-five percent was word of mouth, and the rest are slippers. So we knew that some of the other efforts that we were trying to use to communicate weren't necessarily experienced very wide. Then we asked if people felt their household was adequately prepared for an emergency of this type, so a little more than half, fifty-five percent said, yes, it's not uncommon to lose power in later time here, but the severity of the storm, of course, was very unusual. Then we asked people how many days are prepared for, so almost twenty percent said two and a half days, and almost another twenty percent said about fourteen days, so that's interesting. So some people are very prepared, and then some people are, you know, those first three days, so if you can look at the distribution of that, that, that just gives us some good information there. We asked about the warning center, if folks used it, not a lot of people that took the survey used it, and not a lot of people in general used it, I think the most we had was maybe nine or twelve, don't quote me on that, but around those numbers, and that should be in the survey, what our numbers were, but it was still great that we had it, Red Cross came and helped set that up for us. And then we asked about how people use the services, or how they, what types of services they received. So some people, with this question, people could check multiple things, warm meals was one of the higher ones, none was another kind of higher one, but the highest was assistance from a neighbor, and we knew that anecdotally from conversations, is that people were helping each other. And then we just wanted to know about damage sustained, and so majority of people did not sustain damage at home or business, but there were, were some. Okay, so then after the survey, I think it was beginning of April, we held the after action review workshop, I should explain that it was only people who participated in the response were invited, we just wanted to have a really targeted discussion of people who actually experienced being a volunteer during the response. So seventeen people were able to attend, and we had three breakout sessions, and I'll talk about those a little bit more, and then we had three folks that we did follow-up interviews with. I was able to get a couple of interns from the University of Oregon that assisted with this, so they helped with pulling together the workshop and hosting it, and then also doing the interviews on the backend, and that, that's explained in the report. So I will, process-wise, I'll just tell you briefly how it was, how this was built, and then I'm gonna share some of the findings with you, but we did the breakout sessions with each one of these themes, and the groups, in smaller groups, sat together and discussed what went well, what could go better, and what are their recommendations. And then after those breakout sessions, which are, at the same time, everybody got together to talk about, okay, here's the three priority recommendations from our breakout session, what are the overlapping crosscutting needs, and what are the ultimate recommendations from that group? So the high school, Red Cross, and faith-based groups, that breakout session, their top three recommendations were to create an emergency service plan, considering different, various needs of different neighborhoods, establish a relationship with a helicopter service, or railroad operators for alternate transportation options, and partner with a forest service to adopt their internal team protocol. The emergency response team breakout session recommendations were to create an emergency plan that's coordinated with the county plan, annually updated, considering all hazards, and has a detailed incident command structure, create a communication system that is all neighborhood inclusive, it has the capacity to effectively share to outside world what's going on, and outline clear roles and responsibilities with backup players identified regarding internal and external communications. And then the medical and wellness checks, and I should say, we, we invited participants from all the clinics and postal pharmacy, and then some of the public services, Bobby was a big part with Lane County Senior Services, so that was the focus of this breakout session. Develop and maintain a list of high-risk residents, resident contacts, distributed to community partners and organizations, have a designated point of contact, outline emergency response plan, and include understanding of HIPAA laws in emergency plan section involving medical and wellness checks. So then when everybody came together and shared those findings, we had some discussion, I think the, this, part of this session was an hour and a half, two hours of discussion. The, the main themes that everybody identified, and you guys can kind of sense that from those recommendations, were internal and external communications, emergency planning, and strategic partnerships. So in the report, there's a little bit more on the discussion, but ultimately, these are the, the final recommendations for you as council to consider coming from this group. And it's develop communication protocols for internal community focused information sharing, and external public media and press outreach with clearly defined communication positions, roles, and responsibilities. For emergency planning, it's develop emergency response and recovery plan with clearly established roles and responsibilities for the city and community partners, that identifies internal and external disaster response resources and capabilities. And then for strategic partnerships, develop a community emergency response team that's supported and trained by the City of Oak Ridge to form strategic partnerships and develop community networks for disaster response. And so I'll just clarify a little bit on the last one, one of the participants has had quite a good experience in emergency planning, and talked about CERT teams, which are actually volunteer-based teams, that the citizens within the community that have the certain skill set and can form somewhat of a volunteer response effort that supports your more government-based effort. And, and that's something you stand up, well before a, a disaster happens, you start, start that committee, and those people get trained, and have processes, and everything else, so that when a disaster happens, they're able to respond, and this can be at all risk. So that was a really great idea that came out of, out of all of these. So the last, the next steps after this are basically circulate the report, so everyone can see it and read it, and then implement recommendations through task assignments. So I want to give you guys a chance to ask me questions if you have them about the report, and try and answer them best I can, and then just let you know that I'm available and secure to help answer those questions, and then also at the end of the report, in the appendix, you'll see everybody that participated. And I should say that, I should have led off with this, we had over a hundred people volunteer during this disaster, in all types of capacities, so I think we have a great wealth of, of skill sets in this community, and so I think it's something that we can definitely have to research for future responses. But yeah, so any questions about these, these final recommendations, perhaps?
First of all, thank you for all the effort you put into this, not only in, in going to help us to get it done, and pushing us to, okay, we gotta do this, we gotta do this, we gotta do this, even to those that isn't quite true, not the importance, but how to begin to, to do that, so the expertise is invaluable, so thank you very much, and happy to come. And I really appreciate this, because this gives us a framework to move ahead as we do our emergency plan, which is in that format, and about what we need to be presented, then we can identify what our next steps are, and, really great, really great. Go ahead, Jer.
So I read in the, Rich regard, that the county has somebody doing emergency training in all and different communities around the county, but they didn't come to Oak Ridge. Is that because we're so good and we don't need it?
No, no, they did, they did, actually, I should, this is kind of a, patient works for the county, and.
Are you, did you come here?
She was here on Friday of our disaster response, but she's just one person, and I think you have a shop with two people?
No, actually, so I am the emergency manager for Lane County, and my first day on the job was February nineteenth, and so far, I am staff of one in my program, and hiring assistants, so I'm working on it, I, I'm working on it.
Yeah, so patients did come, but, you know, the town was just swamped, and, yeah.
Not only then, I mean, recently, with the past.
So right now, what I've been doing, focusing lab, or if I may, is working in the Round River area, and helping them understand there, and the unincorporated area with no fire protection, they also have no law enforcement as well, and they're a pretty heavily fueled load, fuel load, fire load, of, of community, so working with them, and helping empower them how to take care of themselves, as well as McKinney Green, so they were just like Oak Ridge, they had no communications, too few to snow, and all landlines, cellular, and first responder radio infrastructure failed for them, so I just helped teach a CERT class for them, so that they can make, they're building their own little neighborhood teams, and it's like neighborhood watch and CERT on steroids, so helping them through that process in August, and that was the first ever rural CERT course that I taught, I am a CERT instructor, and I've been talking with Chief Martin on what that would look like for Oak Ridge, so, working on it.
Yeah, so we'll continue to work on building these things out, and as you guys develop your safety committee, this problem isn't going to land on their laps, too, but, yeah, I think we, we have a lot of great resources, and just pulling them all together, and this is something I think nationally is becoming more and more famous, so, I think we're actually even one after a second. But yeah, so patients, winning, yeah, thank you for being here, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Seth, for being with, with our council meeting. Okay, the round of ten point two, community services report, this all, our, we decided later, and we have drawn.
All right, so.
Can I start with our, can we create services first?
Well, we're not near yet.
This call?
So we're on ten point two?
So the constituent community services meeting has a lot to do with.
Okay, so when you touch it, you have, you want to start first?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, if you would actually go ahead and do that as a precursor to this call, we can even have you do that.
This is the time you're related to somebody, and you give them a look, you know?
I didn't see the look, so.
I just saw a look.
Go ahead.
He's gonna learn from that. So, joking, I'm just joking, who knows?
So, on September twenty-third, I attended my first part of the community services committee meeting, Rick was not present, and one of the things that some councilors are doing now is facilitating these meetings, and so I wanted to kind of step into it with, with kind of some new eyes and thinking different directions with that community, so I met with Rick, we developed an agenda, and I just wanted to kind of go over just a little bit of what we did, and then that will lead into the Osprey Park piece. So at this meeting, one of the first things I wanted to talk about with the group was the resolution that established our committee, and basically it says that words, the committee advises the council to make recommendations and write it. With, with reading, after we read that, I asked the group what some of their goals With reading, after we read that, I asked the group what some of their goals were for the committee, and we talked about their goals and the things that they would like to see, and you know, I have those written down, I'll put these into our minutes once those come out, and then we established a minute-taking process, which was good, everybody agreed to circulate the task and sort of help everybody share a little bit of that responsibility. And then another piece that I thought was really important is we talked about developing a tracking chart for all the different components that go into this committee, the different areas that they look at, so like developing a tab that's about parks and the different projects and things that are going on with their parks, another tab that has to do with trails, and some things to do with community services, and then also tracking volunteer hours to help with any future applications for grants. So we talked about that, and that is a tracking chart that I will be developing and presenting to the committee, this committee. And then we went on to the topics that the committee wanted to discuss, like talked about having a safety committee, and did some of the different things that are on the agenda, and one of the things that came up was the disc golf course, and discussion about Osprey Park and installing three disc golf baskets there. And within our meeting, we had a citizen, the ten who's not a part of the committee, but he was telling us that he has an interest in this, and actually he donated an extra disc golf basket, and I know, I'm not sure where they installed already, Osprey Park?
They installed it.
Yeah, so they were installed today, yeah, sure. So they were installed today, so there's four disc golf baskets that have been installed at Osprey Park, for the committee to use, and a lot of volunteers put a lot of effort into it. And I think it's a great program, but I think we should take it from there, but I just wanted to kind of share about that.
Thank you for talking with me.
Sure, so in regards to the baskets, we did have one donated from Jason, don't recall his last name. The other three used to sit out at the industrial park on Lot 3. They were originally put there a couple of years ago, and those were donated by other Parks and Community Services members, and they put them in on donated time as well. We discovered that they get no use out there, you know, it was, it just wasn't the right setting, the right time, so we decided to move them to Osprey, which is basically just, you know, kind of a taste of disc golf, you know, that is ideally not, if we do develop a course, if we're lucky enough to get grant funding for that, that's not where it would be, it would be in, hopefully in industrial parks, of course, that's ended up for you guys to decide upon. But nonetheless, so all the baskets were donated, pine was donated, the Public Works put in about six hours with one gentleman, about three and a half hours with another, and totaled $500 in materials won today, so today we had the baskets go up, so that was basically all I had to report on that. So hopefully we can get out there and make a great practice course, it would not, it's not going to be a driver for tourism, but it's definitely great for practice. And getting the community involved and saying, hey, this is going to be fun, and a lot of people have just, myself included, have never played.
I went out there this afternoon, put one for the basket, and they have some really, really cool markers, so you know, you have a tread where to toss from, and there, typically it will say, how far is your next, is the basket? And so what they've done is, is cut a log, that's why it's a stump, a small stump, and it's handled, and so much, did you stamp the number in it, or was that burned?
Jason, he heard of that.
Jason, Jason, and so the distance to the next, to the basket is carved into that stump, but it's surrounded by rocks, really cool, but some pictures of it, and it felt nice and clear, thank you. Did you want to say something about, yeah?
So it's great that we took this first step, and we all in this room know about it, and my question is, is there a plan to let the rest of the world know that we have this? Because if we don't, if we don't publicize it, nobody but the people in this room are going to know about it, and most of us don't play.
Why don't you ask him about that? That's going to go on the tracking chart. It's already a piece that I already have planned on putting in there, because with the tracking chart, I just want, definitely going to be setting out pretty many people and target dates.
You mean a story in the registered guard?
Really? So it'd be nice if...
So Mr. Carl?
Yes.
I understand that you have had some experience in writing articles, you've got saved for by line, and you have not met, oh?
Yes.
Would you like to take on putting together a story and getting the information together with Rick, and sending that to the registered guard for Rick?
I would love to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, that would be wonderful, yes.
One step, you know, for tours that are in for you and don't read that particular edition of Register of Rights, how about learning many things that go into hotels directly?
That would be wonderful.
For each, for each room.
That's an excellent idea, excellent idea. And I think some of these things can be passed on to all of the Chamber of Commerce, and ask them, give them the information, so that they can also start disseminating that information out in the things that they produce, such as the map towards Oak Ridge, or they have quite a bit of interest in all that stuff.
Yeah, I was thinking it would be really cool to be able to introduce the high school recommendations.
And Michelle will come, if you have a lot of news. Off while...
Good part, I'll go to the part where... When you have instructions with the rules and regulations, like, you need to make up our own rules as we go. That's, that's an excellent point, too. So all of those things, I think, fall into your committee, Bobby?
Yes.
And we would love to see, to put together a plan for what we'll do for this, and how we communicate to our, not only our community, but outside. And since Mr. Carl had volunteered to write an article, we'd be in touch with him and help him with the information, and get that going comfortably.
I was just like, also, and really, there are, like, the Chamber of Commerce, if they advertise this through their website, then is that going to Oak Ridge? A lot of people look at chamber sites for what to do when they come to visit.
Absolutely.
That's pretty wonderful.
Okay, Council has these.
Isn't there one of these in Lowell?
There is one in Dexter.
Could please, you know, that's...
They have a Dexter Park.
...advertize for other people, because they're involved in...
We are just, all the right, that's an excellent idea, Natalie, thank you. You got all those, Bobby?
Okay, go.
Okay. Okay, Rick, you have some further reports that you want to do?
Yes, so we have, yes, moving on, so I distributed the Public Works monthly report for September. Water distributed was fifteen million, six hundred and fourteen thousand gallons, wastewater treated was seven million, sixty-three thousand gallons. Public Works grew the forty-three service orders, had one water leak, zero wastewater repairs, and nine locates. Other tasks performed was, we finished up street painting, catch, brakes, and maintenance, cleaning out routine, sewer lines, support a cycle organ, storm drain maintenance, overhaul repair, closed down the dump site from storm debris, park maintenance, weed abatement on city properties, the water maintenance relocated for the rest area due to the location of the leak, electromagnetic, electromagnetic flow of meter was replaced at the well field, and the chlorine injection system is back to normal operation. Well number two is still out of service due to catastrophic failure of the pump motor, and have not received yet a word on the cause of the failure, and this report here is courtesy of our Public Works crew leader, Robert, so...
And have you, have you any idea of when the pump will be repaired?
Not.
We don't, we don't have a test for it yet.
Not at the time, right?
That's good.
And then the next piece was a carryover from the last meeting, which was a carryover from the previous meeting, a question regarding cost of different meter sizes for commercial businesses. And that was distributed by email earlier this week, but just for reference, five-eighths inch commercial meter, the base rate is thirty-one ninety-six, and that gives you one thousand gallons, and then after that is three forty-six per gallon. Now, that size of meter has a flow rate of twenty gallons per minute. Moving on to commercial rates, a three-quarter inch meter has a flow rate of thirty gallons per minute, and the base rate jumps up to thirty, thirty dollars ninety-six cents, again, one thousand meters included in the base rate, but the one thousand gallon rate changes for commercial to four eleven, that's a jump up from four, three forty-six for commercial. And then one inch, fifty gallon per minute flow rate is fifty-three dollars six cents. Inch and a half has a hundred gallon per minute flow rate, and it is a hundred and seventeen twenty-one. Two inch is a hundred and sixty gallons per minute flow rate, and that is two hundred and four dollars and sixty cents. A three inch has a three hundred gallon per minute flow rate, and is four hundred and forty-four, four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-four cents per month, and a four inch has a four hundred gallon per minute flow rate, and that is eight hundred and eighteen dollars per month. And then each of those includes a thousand gallons with the four eleven for every additional thousand gallons. So that was, to answer the question from Council Forkham last month.
And so residential is five inches, and what's the gallon per minute?
Flow rate is twenty gallons per minute?
Twenty?
Mm-hmm.
And they create this twenty...
Thirty-one ninety-six.
Thirty, it's higher than the three-quarter inch, thirty-one inch, okay.
Well, no, I'm sorry, the five-eighths by three-quarter, so even if there's a three-quarter inch line, it's down, it is brought down to a five-inch at the meter, so five-inch...
Okay, so these are one of those things?
Yes, exactly.
So these are residential, the remainder are commercial?
That is correct.
Okay, and how many commercials do we have out of a four-inch pipe?
No, I do not have the information.
Okay. Okay.
Kathy?
Yeah?
Actually, I'm actually...
You do?
You're a...
No, okay, thank you.
The biggest pipes that we have, according to one of the reports that I read recently from Oak Ridge...
Okay.
Is two inches, there's twenty-five connections, and one other person that I forget what, deputy of the public, they don't, they don't charge the rate that's normally charged, they charge a flat rate, and there's one person on a flat rate and twenty-five, uh, two or six, you can't forget.
So I have an idea that for a little while, we go back to well number two, can we, no insurance cover any of that?
Haven't you made that determination yet?
We filed a claim with CIS, and they've made a, actually deferred it to Chuck, as a sub, and they're still looking at it. Bottom line is, there's a couple of different areas of the insurance policy that could possibly cover it, and depending on how, when the contractor figures out what the murder failure was, will know which part of the policy it would go towards, but in most cases, in all those, it would be a twenty-one hundred deductible, but I believe for areas, it's going to be much more higher than that, so, but we'll see if they all, they have to make a determination what they're covering up.
Okay, thank you. So once, we don't have any other orders, permission for committee reports, or I have moved from our consent agenda, so it's been lost number thirteen, thirteen point one resolution, we are about to move into the waterway discussion. So first, what's going to happen is we're going to talk about, we're going to listen to the agenda book, and I will open it up for public comment, for those that find out any comments, and then we as council will begin our discussion, and, before that, before that, all of these have been. So waterway, just as a, just as a reminder for council, this is going to be detailed, you're going to see a lot of numbers drawn at you, please ask all the questions that you need to ask, and we will take all the time that we need to, to make sure that there is a good understanding of this. Don't be afraid to ask the same question over again, if it still would be interesting, this has been really important for us as a community. Recognizing that none of us are experts, none of us, you know, have the, wish we had the detail, the knowledge that we need to do this, but we are all in the same position of life, we're a community, please respect the fact that we are in a business meeting, we are trying to understand this, just so we hope that you are trying to understand this, and give us the ability to discuss what we need to. This is a, could be a very heated discussion, so let's all be respectful and honor this agenda. So Ryan, I'll give that to you.
Yes, ma'am, this is the agenda item thirteen point one, the title is Resolution O2, Act 2019, A Resolution Adjusting the Fee for Water Charges. Proposed council action and a motion from the floor and a vote for exhibits, you've got much material behind that to look at. I am the administrator and the author. The issue is here, starting this fiscal year, the city will begin debt service on the IFA loans, which is a state bank, associated with the 2017 water improvement projects that the city got the loan for. In addition, there will be additional loans associated with completing the capital improvements in the project, and other associated costs with the project. Currently, the operation of water funds anticipated to be insufficient to service the debt associated with the improvements and cover the operating needs of the water fund. Where increases are needed to assure that net revenues of the water fund are sufficient to service the debt, it satisfies requirements of the agreement. Other measures may be available to alleviate the need for a portion of the rate increase. Fiscal impact servicing will be approximately three point three four million in principal interest over thirty years for the original water project, and additional water infrastructure improvements. In addition, other costs associated with the project are estimated to increase the debt service by five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in principal interest over thirty years. Staff recommends a rate increase as determined by debt record limits, considering the measures that may impact the amount required rate increase. So that's a, that's a mouthful, but what I want to do is kind of boil it down for you to kind of take a look at your options, so you really have three options. First is, you can do nothing, no increase, you can vote it down, and what are the impacts if you take that route? Possible default on the debt, so each mortgage payment, or loan payment we make each year, we have to actually produce from the water fund one hundred and twenty percent of that loan. So if we are producing that, or we are not right now, the bank could actually come to default on the loan, which would be, I think, maybe a compromise. This would also be give us the inability to finance any future change orders, which I know you're familiar with the one that we just settled, as well as any future well number two rehurshment, which is an obvious need, as you see the pump just fail. There are other parts of that pump, of that well system that need refurbishment, the piping that goes into the well. As well, we're in the middle of, we paid for the test drill for test well number three, but we have not yet taken out money from the loan for, if that proves to be a good well, the drilling of well number eight, which is going to be well number two. So that's the, no, just do nothing and vote this down. We've asked, the reason we left the number blank is because there's a range that you can approve here, the lower number, which is six eleven...
That's six seventeen ninety.
So what happens if you approve that? That allows a water fund basically to fund itself, it just funds waters, providing water for the citizens, and it accommodates the debt servicing that begins this year, and a little bit is set aside each year for future capital improvements, so we don't have to go to the bank to borrow again, should that happen. That sort of automatically accumulates, because since we have to service one hundred and twenty percent, we have to take that one hundred and twenty percent of the debt, that twenty percent would be that saving to capital improvements at the end of this year. So that's the, if you choose the lower amount. The higher amount of eleven dollars and change, this assumes the water fund is going to subsidize through the general fund, some of your other services that are stated currently provides but are operating in a deficit, whether that be the fire EMS or the police department. So that's, that, as a council, you're making the decision that you are going to use water fund money to subsidize those operations from the general fund. And all of this assumes, and we're working toward this with the finance director, we're going to work toward a fairly allocated administrative overhead number for each department, so there's no more shifting it around as you need it, as a way to move money between funds. It's going to be a constant that's revised annually each year, depending on the changes in workload across those different departments. If the man is constant, if any money has to move around, that will be an interfund transfer between funds, so it's very transparent and obvious to where that money is moving to and from where. So that's kind of the summary for you. And what I'll do now is hand it over to Bill, our finance director, who's done, pretty much beating them over the heads, and he's got here to look at this project and give you this information and do the analysis, so hopefully you have...
So before I have Bill do this, I think what I'm going to do is ask for public comment, and then we can have your presentation, and we can move into directly the questions from the council and understand it. So, shoot, I have a listing somewhere in here. So, let's see. So, let's see. Dennis?
Dennis Patterson, 47871, West First Street. At the last meeting for this table, I already spoke about the town hall meeting in the summer of 2015, where the million gallon tank was tacked onto the cross of Jordan and New Well. And the right height for all water subscribers was approved without any vote of the subscribers as to whether they wanted to fund it. The next statement, I have absolutely no data to support, but it's my feeling that over half of the residents in Oak Ridge are retired and on mixed income. I have nothing to support that but personal interpretation. We're going to run out of money. If you keep trying to squeeze the same orange, it's going to come up dry eventually. I think before we just go ahead and say, hey, let's raise the water rates, I mean, I just got a water bill for, it's about double what it was when I moved here seven years ago. If you're going to dip into our wallets again, because we already, we already took the money out for this water project, and somehow I've got, it did not end up where it was supposed to be, which is why we're here tonight. So if you're going to dip into our wallets again, you should at least ask our permission. I think there should be an informal vote, not a big $3,000 election thing, just slip of paper in the water bill that says, would you be willing to have a higher rate to support what needs to be done? Just go out to all the water subscribers that way and drop it off and mail it back to you. But I think we should at least have a saying, remember, if I got some more money, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. True. You pretty much got answered it, what would happen if we didn't have water increase rates? And it's my understanding it could affect public emergency services from police and fire, and what other areas would that...
That would come apparent when Bill shows us it. But basically, almost every fund is operating in a deficit right now, with the exception of water. So if you don't do anything with water, all the deficit spending is going to remain. We have capital left from last year that will get through this year, following, the following year, things would be provided.
Thank you. And those are the only two, so I have written down for all of this. If anybody else beyond us has anything to say before we start our discussion, I would like to hear. Okay. Beth?
First, council, a lot of information. I'm hoping we'll find, have time to match this for the moment. Here, there. Afraid this chart is, this chart is a little large, you can get on the screen with a full screen, but basically, and I don't want to get kind of on these earlier charts, but the reason I prepared this chart is I wanted to show how the city was, as Brian mentioned, many of our funds are operating in a deficit on an annual basis right now. And I wanted to show how each fund was doing, and how, on the right-hand column, how the funds as a whole were doing by this bar chart. And on the left-hand side is FY19 actual numbers. And on the right side there is the FY20, based on the FY20...